I would like to call to order the December 18th, 2023 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting. Welcome, everyone. It's good to see such a full house tonight. If you would please stand and join me with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you would please join me in a moment of silence for our invocation tonight. Thank you. I want to give a special welcome to our youth commissioner tonight, Mackay Nash. It's good to have you with us. Mackay has been active in our youth commissioners. He's also a graduate of our Leadership and Career Institute that we held during the summer, has helped us out with some presentations at our North Carolina Association of Counties Convention when we had it here in Cabarrus County. So he's been very active in a lot of areas. We're happy to have you with us tonight. Okay, this is, as is indicated by our rules of procedure, will be our organizational meeting tonight where we elect the chairman and vice chairman of the board. So I'm going to turn the meeting over to County Manager Mike Down to conduct the election for chairman.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We will proceed.
Microphone.
Sorry. We will proceed with taking nominations for the chairman of the board for the ensuing year. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Steve Morris for chairman.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? All right, nominations are closed. And by what you'd like to announce by acclamation? Well, congratulations, Chairman Morrison. You are the chairman for the ensuing year.
We should all need a vote on it.
Vote? Yeah, that's what I was just saying. We can vote or by acclamation. Okay, all those in favor of Commissioner Morris for chairman for the ensuing year, please raise your right hand. Okay, we have four. All those against? What? Four to one. The vote being four to one, Commissioner Morris is elected as the chair for the ensuing year.
Thank you. Okay, we'll proceed now with election for vice chairman of the board, and I'll open the floor for nominations for vice chairman. And I would nominate Commissioner Lynn Shue to serve as vice chairman. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will call the nominations closed and call for a vote. All in favor of Commissioner Shue as vice chairman, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, and it looks like a five oh vote. Congratulations, Commissioner Shue, and I'll open up the floor now for any comments that you might have, if anything you'd like to say.
I just want to thank the board, my fellow board members, for your putting me back in as your vice chair and putting confidence in me to do what needs to be done. And in the event of Chairman Morris's absence, I'll be there. And, you know, I appreciate all of yous, each one of yous, and thank you so much.
Thank you for your willingness to serve, and I would echo those sentiments. I consider it quite an honor to be chosen by my fellow board members to lead the board, and I will do the best job that I can in the ensuing year. So thank you very much. So we move now to the approval of the agenda. You all have a copy of that before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the meeting agenda? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to recognitions and presentations. We're happy to have Ian Sweeney with us from Active Living in Parks to recognize our Senior Games State Finals participants, and joined by Megan Bumgarner. Welcome, both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, and good evening. Cabarrus Senior Games is a part of a network of 54 local games across North Carolina, serving all 100 counties. Since its inception in 1983, local games have been and remain the foundation of this health and wellness program for active adults age 50 or better. Our local games finished 2023 with 20% participation growth over last year, including 262 total participants and 137 silver artists. Cabarrus County Active Living in Parks partners with Harrisburg, Kannapolis, and Concord Parks and Recreation to run local games throughout Cabarrus County. The success of the games at the local level is due to the dedication of our event managers, volunteers, and the competitive spirit of our participants, some of which in this room with us. We are here today to recognize the individual athletes and artists that represented our county at the North Carolina Senior Games State Finals. These individuals are the true embodiment, the five F's of senior games: fun, fitness, friends, fellowship, and family. At this time, Megan Bumgarner, Active Living in Parks Commission Chair, will read the names of our Cabarrus County Senior Games state finalists.
Thank you, Ian. Thank you, first of all, to all the Senior Games participants who are present with us in the room tonight, but a very big thank you to each of you for giving us the time to recognize these individuals and their achievements at the Senior Games. Cabarrus Senior Games will begin registration on February 5th for the 2024 games, and those will include two new sanctioned events: disc golf and doubles mixed doubles cornhole. We invite all Cabarrus County residents age 50 and better to join us for the 2024 local games. And if you aren't quite 50 yet, that's fine. We treat our volunteers very, very nicely. So there's always a way for members of the community to participate. So I am going to read this very distinguished list of Senior Games participants. If you are present in the audience this evening, if you'll please stand to be recognized. What I'm going to ask is that we hold our applause till the end so we can equally celebrate everyone. William Allman, Kathy Berry, one silver and two bronze medals. Myra Bumgarner, a silver medalist. Amy Beaver, one silver, one bronze medal. Elizabeth Bennett, a silver medalist. Brent Biggar, Carla Biggar, two bronze medals. Robert Bouts, Tawana Brooks. Janet Buck, Michael Burris, a gold medalist. Vincent Cagna, a bronze medalist. George Christian, a silver medalist. Harry Clay III, Margaret Cleveland, a gold medalist. Jack Kraft, one gold and two silvers. Lisa Kraft, a silver medalist. Connie Dinkler, a bronze medalist. Sharon Earnhardt, Ronald Flanders, a six-time gold medalist. Dale Hewitt, Judy Hillhouse, gold medalist. Penny Hoover, bronze medalist. Sandy Kaufman, bronze medalist. Richard Kelly, Star Kelly, a silver medalist. Donna Kinnahan, Cheryl Kreitzer, silver medalist. Karen Lewis, bronze medalist. Barbara Long, Jimmy Lucas, a bronze medalist. Marvin Martin, a gold medalist. Francisco Martinez, bronze medalist. Mary Moller, three gold and one silver. Jerry Owen, one gold, one bronze. Virginia Palmer, two gold, one silver. Molly Plowman, silver medalist. James Polk, Mike Royster. Cindy Ruby, a silver medalist. Lynn Salvagio, a four-time silver medalist and one bronze. Gwen Zimbraskey, a gold medalist. Steve Zimbraskey. Edward Shepherd. Scott Simpson. Joanne Smith. John Voe, silver medalist. Mary Watts, silver medalist. Joe White. Sharon White. Tawanda White Miller. Philip Wise. And Kathy Wirths, one gold, one bronze. Congratulations, everybody. As you can tell, Cabarrus County was very well represented. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that presentation, and thank you all for participating. I really liked the sound of all that hardware clinking as people stood up, but it is a great program. We certainly appreciate everyone that participates in it, and certainly appreciate our staff. Ian Sweeney and others that are involved in the program do a tremendous job. Always enjoy attending the kickoff celebration for senior games, and I think Cabarrus County is probably one of the leaders in the state in a lot of different areas in that regard. So we certainly appreciate you representing us so well. Thank you. And I also like the way they say always 50 or better, too. So thank you very much. At this time, I'll call on Kelly Sifford for a recognition.
Thank you. That one doesn't end now. So I wanted to bring Matt Love before you. Matt was awarded the Edison Hubert Johnson Award at the North Carolina Building Officials' Conference. The award is NCBI A's highest award recognizing an individual for their active participation, leadership, dedication, and professionalism over their career in code enforcement. And these were traits all displayed by the first president. Matt was selected because he distinguished himself not only within our jurisdiction, but his services to the association and state body is recognized as an expert throughout our state and as a resource for many different jurisdictions throughout the state. And I didn't want the opportunity to pass without recognizing Matt.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to say thanks for the opportunity, and also, it wouldn't be possible without all the leadership that I've received over the years working for the county. And Cabarrus County's inspection staff, permitting staff, is by far one of the best in the state and is relied on by a lot of jurisdictions across the state for guidance and support. So I get a lot of credit for this, but it's a joint effort.
Great. Thank you very much, and thank you for your leadership in this area. There were several of the commissioners that were involved in a tour of the Eli Lilly Construction Site within the last week. And I know Commissioner Workman specifically mentioned that he wanted to make some comments about the things that they had to say about our staff. So would you like to do that now?
They were very complimentary about our inspection department. They said that while you guys are stern, you are fair, you're more than willing to work at lightning speed to make sure that they can keep progressing. And they expressed their gratitude and said that it's very refreshing to come somewhere and to get along with the inspections Department like that.
Great. Thank you. And I think that when we talk to prospective industry that's looking at our community, that is one of the questions that they go to the other folks that have come before them and say, you know, what was your experience like working with county government and with the inspections Department? And, you know, how was your construction process here in Cabarrus County? And that is, and we get good marks because of your efforts. And that's the reason that we've been so successful. Because that's not true everywhere they go. And that's not that. It's not the answer that they hear. So we appreciate that more than you will know. And so at this time, I would like to call on Bob Bushy from Transportation Driver Recognition.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for letting me come tonight. My purpose here tonight is to brag on staff. Cabarrus County Transportation has used a transportation vendor for the last 20 years to help with our overflow trips and our Saturday and Sunday trips. They came to us in October and informed us that they would no longer be in business and gave us eight days' notice. So we had to go through the process of finding another vendor, negotiating rates, scope of work, getting a contract in place, which is about a six-week progress. While we spent those six weeks doing that, we still had clients that had critical trips they needed to take for dialysis and cancer treatment and so forth. So we called our drivers together, a few of which are here tonight, if y'all wouldn't mind standing up. Everybody's not here, to inform them that we were going to need them to work Saturdays and Sundays until this process was completed. Without hesitation, the response I got was, we have your back. And for six weeks, these drivers have done this. Our supervisors, management team have been right beside them doing this, including Thanksgiving. And we just thought they deserved. They don't get enough recognition. We felt like we wanted to bring them up here and just let them know how much we appreciate everything they've done.
Absolutely.
I just want to say thank you to all of our drivers. They really did step up. No hesitation, no argument. They were all there when we needed them, and we really do appreciate them. So thank you, guys. Very much appreciate it.
I'd just like to say Bob pointed us out. He was there on the weekends with us, too. And then we extend an open invitation to anybody on the board. If you want to come in and ride with our drivers to see what they do from an inside perspective, reach out to me. We'll get you set up with a driver. All right?
Great. Thank you very much. I think these are truly some of the unsung heroes that work in county government. We don't always hear a lot of discussion about the clients that they serve, and most of them are in very critical situations, just like the examples that were mentioned. So to have people that care about the citizens of Cabarrus County and willing to go above and beyond to make sure that their medical appointments are met and those needs are met truly are heroes. So we thank you very, more than you will know. And at this time, I would like to call on Mia Stockton for a recognition of Anthony Hodges on his retirement.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm going to try not to cry, Anthony. It is my distinct honor and privilege to recognize Mr. Anthony Hodges in his retirement from Cabarrus County Government. Anthony started his career with the Department of Human Services back in 1995 as a social worker one in-home aid coordinator. He then transitioned to a social worker two for the Community Alternatives Program for two years. From there, he moved to a social worker supervisor over the home care unit overseeing as many as 250 in-home aides for 16 years. For the past seven years, he has served as program administrator for adult and aging and transportation. His passion for helping our aging and adult population is unmatched with 28 and a half years of dedicated service to Cabarrus County. His entire career has been in adult services. Anthony is also a military navy veteran. Thank you for your service, Anthony. One of our favorite stories of Anthony's service is when a family care home abruptly had to close in 95-degree heat of July. Anthony was there helping the residents move, gathering their personal belongings, copying records, ensuring everyone had a safe place to go. There was not a draw thread on him. Doesn't take much, does it, Anthony? This is a testament to being a true servant leader. Another time, we had a young guardianship case involving labor trafficking where Anthony made sure in the very early's of the morning, the individual got to school on time, was fed and clothed. Also, at every DHS event, Anthony is there. He is there to serve our staff from setup to cleanup. He will truly be missed, but we congratulate him and sincerely thank him for his service to our community and staff. Well done, our good and faithful servant, Anthony. Best wishes to you in your next chapter. I will now let you say a few words. Thank you so much for your service.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mia, and I thank Mia and all of you just for recognizing me tonight. And just thank you for the last several years. I've came before you commissioners to present agenda items and those kind of things. Actually, you're voting on the last one I presented to you at the consent agenda here in a little bit. And just to let, I do have a couple more in January, but somebody else will present those instead of me. But I have submitted. But again, thank you for all your support through the years. Thank you, Mr. Cook. I want to thank him. Several years ago, we had a pretty serious issue involving a ward and some other issues. Mr. Cook stepped in, handled that for us over a several month period, and I do appreciate that. Again, appreciate, and the things they said about me, that was my staff. You know, I was at that facility, all of my staff were there. They do an outstanding job. I always have. And I will tell you, I have no doubt, going forward, the leadership I have in that division, or that you have in that division, and the staff in that division, I'm biased, but I think our adult services is probably the best in the state, and I'd put it against anybody. And you've already heard about transportation. I was privileged to have them as part of my division for a while to be part of that. And I think that management team is set up now. They are lined up, and they have that department running just extremely well, and I'm really proud of that as well. But again, I appreciate all of that. I appreciate, as you mentioned, too, that working, I've worked with four different directors and three interim directors while I've been and three interim directors while I've been here. I'll get directors. I want to just point out that the last six years, I've worked with Karen, and I think the things she's done for the county, the innovations with the hub of an initiative and other things, the Dream Center, I think will serve these citizens of the county for years to come, and I appreciate that. And the last thing I leave you is just a request. As you go forward with the budget this year and moving forward, Cabarrus County is a very prosperous and growing county. But I ask that you remember the, those that are less fortunate, especially our elderly, older adults and our adults with disabilities. As you go forward and make those hard decisions with the budget, I ask that you continue to invest in them and in their staff, and I appreciate that. So thank you so much.
Anthony, I wanted to let him quiet down a little bit first, because I wanted everybody to hear, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and a grateful Cabarrus County, I wanted to present this to you as a token of our appreciation for all you did, all those years, the commitment, the servant attitude that you've had. And I didn't, I knew that we had a bond somewhere, but I didn't know quite what it was. But when they said that you served in the Navy, man, that made us veteran brothers. I appreciate you. Thank you. Best of luck with your retirement, and we'll be here.
Thank you.
You'll think about us once in a while.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes.
As I always say, when we do these retirement recognitions, it's a bittersweet moment. We have learned to know you so well and have called you, on you, for help so many times that obviously we want only the best for you, but we really don't want to see you go either. But I hope that retirement is good to you, and thank you for everything that you have done and continue to do for Cabarrus County.
I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Okay, we move now to a proclamation for Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And I will read this proposed proclamation now. Whereas Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born on January 15, 1929, in Atlanta, Georgia, and devoted his life to fighting poverty, injustice, and racism in America. And whereas Reverend Dr. King, through his practice of nonviolent protest, promoted the importance of love, peace, and freedom for all humankind, and challenged America to honor its promise of liberty and justice for all citizens. And whereas during his lifetime, Reverend Dr. King sought to forge the common ground on which individuals of all ages, races, and backgrounds could join together to address important community issues and provide service to their community. And whereas the third Monday in January has been established as a national holiday to observe the anniversary of Reverend Dr. King's birth and commemorate it as a national day of service. And now therefore, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims Monday, January 15, 2024, as Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in Cabarrus County, and encourages all citizens to join in the special programs and ceremonies to be held throughout the county honoring the life and work of Reverend Dr. King and his legacy of peace and equality for all citizens. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. Do I hear a motion that we adopt it as presented?
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we have one more recognition item that's not on our agenda, but I wanted to talk for just a moment about this award that, this is the 2023 Visionary Award to Cabarrus County Government. And this is, was awarded to us at the Celebrate Cabarrus Event, which I think was December the 8th, sponsored by the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And in this visionary award, they specifically cited the partnerships that we have had with the Convention and Visitors Bureau to create the artificial turf fields at several of our high schools that are used for tourism events on weekends. We're bringing a lot of room nights and a lot of consumer spending into Cabarrus County. In addition to that, we partnered with the CVB to put the Mondo Track in at J. Robinson High School, which it opened just about a month, about a month ago. I think that the events that they have booked at that facility so far have resulted in about a $4.5 million impact to spending in Cabarrus County with the events that they have been able to attract. So we very much appreciate the CVB recognizing the county and certainly appreciate all of you that have voted to support these projects, that are benefiting not only our tourism, but also our students and our local schools. So thank you to them, and thank you to you for that support. And we move now to informal public comments. Our comments are people that have submitted the yellow cards. Each person has three minutes to speak. And our first speaker is Ray Helms.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm here tonight because past Monday night, I visited the school board and confronted them about obscene material. And after waiting about a year for them to remove it, it's not been done. But I did mention that I was going to go to the public library, and I went there and I found disturbing things. There's over 4,000 books that has reference to immorality that teenagers have access to. So I brought the law, just so I could read a couple things to you, so you know it's the North Carolina Obscenity Law. And at 14-191, Section 4, it says, "The material as used is not protected or privileged under the Constitution of the United States or the Constitution of North Carolina." Reason I read that, a lot of people feel that they have governmental immunity over things like that, but they don't. And also, it covers, and I'm going to show you an example tonight, materials and pictures and drawings. So we have a book that 10-year-olds have access to. It's called "It's Perfectly Normal." It don't look very filthy, but when you open it up, let me just give you a little preview. How would you like for your 10-year-olds to look at that? That's in our public school library and our public library. This is child pornography right here. February the 15th, 2010, the commissioners voted Article 4, Boarding Powers and Duties. To formulate and adopt a program for policies for the library, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners have legal regulatory power over the libraries. Being Republicans, I thought you might be interested in what the platform says about it. On the preamble, it says they are for the rule of law. So I guess this wouldn't be necessarily a problem for y'all. And it says in their Article 1 for family, "We affirm the authority that parents have the rights of children welfare and conception to emancipation," and that "they should have written and notarized consent over any sexual orientation or gender identity." That book also talks about gender identity. In the VAC, it even says that abortion is a safe procedure. Just want you to know, God calls it murder. And also, well, I'll end it there. I think you get my point. I hope that your moral compass is a little better than the school board's.
Okay, our next speaker is Jerry Anderson.
Jerry Anderson, Kannapolis, North Carolina. I just want to say, this community has heard for the last year what I've had to say that happened in my family. My family's been hurt, these people being hurt today still. I think Mr. Goldberg's gone because he was one of the investigators that told me the reason they come on a Saturday afternoon to take my child, because we just had an investigation five months, and they said as long as the child's at my house, that's fine. But the reason they come to my house to take the child, because the two DSS workers lied again and said my daughter had moved. And all that week, they'd been asking me, where's Erica? Where's Erica? I said, at the hospital, at the hospital. They, I guess she moved to the hospital. They abused her so bad, she had to go to the hospital, and they said she moved. And the only way they was going to take my daughter was to get her out of my house, because we was doing the right thing. Now, we went over there in June, and this was in April, she'd been going to school every day. And how they could take that child, I see, they had to have an orchestrator. Mike Downs, are you the orchestrator? You closed your doors? You did wrong investigations. That wasn't even the investigations you should have done. You threw everybody off, said we did investigations. Do you have to, do you hire the attorney for the DSS or have anything to do with it? Because you hired a good one, Jay White, who threatened our house, who threatened me. Do you know that the judge and him work together? That sounds like collusion to me, and you running all these children through DSS through these two? Hey, I ain't gonna say nothing wrong with you. Yeah, you, whatever you want, Mr. Jay White. I don't like it. And she don't want to answer the question whether she knew my daughter was a helpless child? She don't have to. We already know, even with these mental problems, moderate type 2 bipolar disorder, read about it, post-traumatic disorder, read about it, borderline personality disorder, read about it, schizophrenia, which your DSS got her shot for, read about it. Read about it. And this Christmas, I'm without my daughter, who's dead, y'all abused so bad, and took a child away from her. The only reason she should have had that child taken from her was a medical reason intended for her not to have that child because of schizophrenia or something like that.
Okay, our next speaker is Jeter Anderson.
Jeter Anderson, I don't waste no time talking about the scandal tonight that's going on in Cabarrus County DSS. Our DSS solution to the scandal was build another one. So now we got two out-of-control DSSs. And our community should not be scared to use DSS, but we're scared of DSS with these monsters still in there. They abused my sister, and they hurt her. And I want to know what kind of man can't get an answer to a question? Are they the same kind of man as my dad, or if they had a door, would they shut it? Anyway, I waited a year for this answer, for this man to give me an answer to the question. And he got around to it. I thought he would take the judge out to E.T.O. Charlie's or do something. I wonder if he asked this question like it was his family? I wonder if he asked it like, or did it matter if it was a black child? It might, he might have cared if it was a black child, his roots might have run deep. I don't know. But you know, if it was his child, he probably would have got an answer. Anyway, Kristi Willam, we had to vote for you. Your name was the only name on the ballot. And how does a judge get up there and you can't answer a question? Did you know if my sister was a helpless child? Yes or no? That has nothing to do with the case. That's a yes or no answer. And if you can't answer it, well, then we got a child scandal going on. And the abusers, I don't know why they're being protected so bad. What were they promised? You know, they touched my sister. My sister was messing with some Velcro and said it looked like the lady's hair. And she slapped her hand, said, quit doing that. And what's a hands-on policy for your DSS to touch people? We don't, we don't like, in our home, we don't have hands-on policies. We have hands-off, and your DSS should have it, too. Since I've been coming up here, nothing's been done, nothing. And I don't want to see this happen to anybody else. And it's going to happen more and more. Something happened to my sister's diagnosis, and y'all's, she's a federal helpless child. Richard Cook did the investigation, but he don't care about this federal form. It's evidence. It's evidence. I seen him walk in here again with a cane. He don't need that cane. He, it's a weapon. He don't need that cane. If my sister didn't need a lawyer in court, well, he don't need that cane. He needs to leave that weapon. I'm up here talking about some of y'all, and that weapon needs to stay outside the door. No more bringing it in here. My sister don't need a lawyer, you don't need a cane. And this DSS, man, it is awful. It is terrible. And nothing has been done. I don't know about these monsters, I don't know if they're still here, but how can they have so much power to take away somebody that loves them, would do anything for them? So y'all are taking kids that don't need to be taken. Look at this, because I have a black son. That is the Shonda Christian up here in Cabarrus County that took my niece. I don't see y'all with pictures like this because y'all have a white child.
Okay, our next speaker is Reverend Roland Jordan.
Preach in Jesus' name, Mr. Chairman Morris, County Manager, the Chairman of the Boards, and as one of y'all. Thank for having the minority on the board. I think the first one, this, I seen one up there, that's good. Praise God. But I come in for you tonight, just talking on Mercedes-Benz. She's about 87 years old, and she went in a nursing home, and her dogs got missing. And they lied to her about her dogs, and I had to go all the way, I think, to Union County, where they put her dogs, you know. And I know the dog was a little in bad condition, but she was willing to take care of that when she get out. But you shouldn't have lied to her, you know. And I still talk to the shelter department, they say nothing they could do now because the family that have them wanting to let the woman see her dogs there. And I think that's cruelty, you know. And due time doesn't always have patience. God gonna work with you, with y'all, I guarantee that, like he gonna work with me. I may be standing for him for my senior. Hope y'all be ready to stand for, for y'all. And I pray to God that we get some people of color on the board that's gonna help our people, our black people, because we don't have it like we should. Oh, we ask y'all to be fair. When y'all be fair, we okay with us. Praise God. Let you know one thing, praise God, I'm gonna speak for my people until the Lord call me home, but I want to speak the truth. Praise God. Yeah, them judges and DA, they work together, but that's all right. God gonna take care of them, too, but I'm speaking about it. But when time for voting, the Lord don't want them there, they won't be there. But we need better control in the courthouse. I'm a pastor, didn't even want me to be with my lady friend. And I'm a man of love, you know. It bothered me, but I'm just like Hercules. You can't stop me. Praise God. But I say, but God bless you, and I look for some changes to be coming soon.
Okay, that concludes all the cards that we have for informal public comments. And we will move now to the consent agenda. All of the items on the consent agenda are items that were discussed at our work session two weeks ago. We discussed those items at length, which gives the public two weeks after our work session to contact any of the Board of Commissioners if they have any comment that they would like to make or information to share about the items we discussed. And then, of course, they have the opportunity to speak during public comment on those as well. So at this time, do I hear a motion that we adopt the consent agenda as presented?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, no. That motion... That motion passes. And we move now to new business. First item of new business is our Economic Development Grant Program Policy. The purpose of this item, this is one item that was pulled off the consent agenda at the request of Commissioner Meesmer, so I'm gonna turn the floor over to him.
Yeah, I'd be happy to speak about this first. I pulled this item off of our consent agenda at the last meeting to ensure there could be some more discussion amongst the Commissioners regarding our tax incentive policy. It's my understanding that this policy has not been revised in over a decade, if not close to going on two decades now. Also, it's my understanding that Cabarrus County is one of the first counties in the state to implement a tax incentive policy. So tonight, I wanted to discuss how we could be innovative once again in Cabarrus County and take a look more into our EDC tax incentive policy. I would like to see, and what I would be proposing to the Board as an opportunity, is I would like to see our tax rate connected with the tax incentives. So, you know, we hear that the tax incentive policy is what keeps the tax rate low for the taxpayers of the county. However, as I've mentioned in meetings in prior, that we have the highest tax rate in the region. So I would like to propose that set up a committee to have, to look more into this and to see how the taxes incentives are directly impacting the community with all the growth and development in our area and how that could positively affect the taxpayer. So as we have companies that move into the area and the county government's receiving additional revenues from these businesses, if we connect that to our tax rate to use those revenues to lower the tax rate for our local taxpayer in the county, I think that would be a win-win for everybody in the community, and I think it would be a great compromise on this EDC policy. So, you know, as, with that being said, you know, as I mentioned, I would like to set up a committee. I would chair, I'd be happy to chair the committee since I've brought this before you as an opportunity, table this, table this item to a future meeting and allow a committee to be able to dive into, into this policy and get more concrete numbers. And I would make a motion to that effect, but I will allow the other Commissioners to chime in.
Any other comments on that? I have a few comments that I would make on that. And certainly, one of the things that I find very concerning about it is at our work session meeting two weeks ago, I think Commissioner Shu made reference to the fact that in our annual survey, that there were a number of people that had indicated that we were not as transparent as we, as we should be. And of course, that's something that I think everyone on this board has spoken publicly about our desire to be as transparent as possible. When, when you pulled this item off the consent agenda and brought it to the meeting, to New Business for discussion, I think that that was a very strong movement that took away the transparency that this board needs to have. And so, the logical way, if you had an alternative proposal or if you had concerns with the current economic development project, uh, policy, then we could have entered into a discussion about it at that time, heard your concerns, heard your proposals. That would've given the public two weeks to contact any of us to express their opinions about it. It would've also given those same individuals an opportunity to come and speak in public. Comment at this meeting tonight, but by not being willing to discuss it when it came up on the items in our work session, you deprived all those people of input that I think would help in our discussion tonight. As far as the, the policy is concerned, I don't have a concern with the policy as it is written now. And I wanted to respond to the comment that you made, I think you made it our last meeting, and you made it again tonight, about Cabarrus County having one of the highest tax rates in the region. The last meeting, you referred to a page in the North County Association of County Commissioners' rate map book that talked about property tax rates. And where it could bound, if you flip to the very next page, it's tax levy per capita for every county in the state. It lists, I think your specific comparison was between Cabarrus County and Mecklenburg County. Cabarrus County and per capita tax rate is number twenty-one in the state. Mecklenburg County is number eleven. In some of the literature that you, I think you can do a simple Google search, you'll find that Mecklenburg County's per capita tax rate is number five in the state. But if you look at those per capita tax rates, and you look at Cabarrus Counties compared to Mecklenburg County, and the per capita tax rate is determined by taking the total amount of taxes levied in the county divided by the total population of the county. So obviously, those numbers in Mecklenburg County are much, much higher than they are in Quebec, Cabarrus County. But if, if Mecklenburg County were to adopt the same per capita taxes that Cabarrus County has, they would lose one hundred and fifty-four million, two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars in revenue. I think that's a very clear indication that our taxes are not higher than Mecklenburg County. On the same token, if Cabarrus County were to adopt Mecklenburg County's per capita tax rate, then we would have an increase in revenue of thirty-one million, nine-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars. That would equate to about eight and a half cent on our tax rate. So clearly, Cabarrus County's taxes are not higher than Mecklenburg County's. And I think that our citizens are not concerned about the tax rate as much as they are about the tax bill. The tax bill is what they have to pay, and clearly, in Cabarrus County, our per capita taxes are lower than Mecklenburg County. Now, that, that doesn't have anything to do with our economic development policy, but to tie, and I've heard you make the comment before, to tie our economic development, well, incentive policy to a mandatory reduction of the tax rate, I can't see any reasoning behind that. I think the big advantage to the successes that we have had from an economic development standpoint are the facts that we have avoided tax increases. I think our tax rate has remained the same since 2019, if I remember correctly, were it not for the additional revenue, which I think, my computations over the past ten years, we have very conservatively had new economic development investments in our tax base in excess of three-point-five billion dollars, which results in an additional twenty-six million dollars per year in, in revenue to the county. If we had not had those projects, those projects to come along that have built our tax base, that are paying those taxes, then we would have had to have increased our tax rate by ten cent to generate that same amount of income, or close thereabouts. So when we hear the needs from our school system, the, the amount of seats that they're gonna have to add to the system over the next eight years, then for us to, and I'm not sure how you do it, you know, I used the example, I think, the other day about the last high school that we built cost roughly seventy-eight million dollars, which I thought was a very big figure at that time. Now that we are looking at having to build another high school, the estimates that I'm hearing are north of a hundred and thirty million dollars to build the same facility. And I think anybody that has experienced any sort of construction project over the past several years has seen increases to that extent on just about everything they've tried to do. So how you meet those increased needs by limiting your, your tax revenue, I mean, we're all interested in keeping property taxes as low as possible. And if, and if we can, if we can generate economic development projects, new investments in our tax base to cause that to happen, I think every single one of us is in favor of that. But to, to change our economic development pro, uh, policy to limit our ability to do that, I don't think is, is a smart thing to do. And as the cost continues to grow, the only other thing that we can do is cut services. And so, we can either increase revenue, or we can cut services. And so, then we have to talk about, you know, what, what do we want to cut? Do we want to cut parks? Do we want, I don't think we want to cut EMS services. We certainly don't want to cut our support to, to public safety, to law enforcement, any of those things. So it's, it's a very difficult question, but I will, will open the floor to comments from, from other Commissioners.
I would like to respond first.
Let's let everyone have their turn to speak.
You've made some direct.
And then we'll go back, back to you.
You made some direct statements towards me that I would like to respond to.
And, and as soon as everybody else has their opportunity to speak, we'll come back to you. So I think Commissioner Shu would key up his mic.
Well, I was getting ready to, you know, I don't want to enter. I like a good debate, and that's what we're supposed to do, guys. I mean, we're supposed to talk it over. We're not gonna always agree, and we can agree to disagree and do what the citizens of the county put us in office to do, and that is make good factual decisions. Now, I, I can't help but think of back when I was on the school board, and this is gonna take a few minutes, so you just be patient with me. I'll get to the end in a minute. But when I was on the school board, I was chair there for a couple of years, and I remember fussing at the Commissioners because we didn't ever have enough money. And this, and we're getting the same treatment now, they never have enough money, no matter how much we give them, it's never enough. And this latest request, of course, is for a billion dollars to accomplish a lot of different things. But I remember distinctly though, because I'm always one, I'm very conservative, I'm always one concerned about debt. And how do you pay the debt? And I remember distinctly, back during the school board time, the debt the county was in at that time was a little over four-hundred million dollars in debt. And, you know, I thought that was pretty good little bit of money there. But I found out this week that our finance officer sent out a report, you, all the Commissioners received it, and I spent a lot of time in that. And based on the county's integrity, the county's ability to pay a loan back, or loans back, we're capable, based on everything that we have, to pay back a loan up to two billion dollars. That's what we're capable of doing, a loan of up to two billion dollars. Well, how does that relate to what I said about the four-hundred million dollars whenever I was on the school board twelve years ago? Well, since then, since that four-hundred million, we have built a number of schools. I can't even remember. Chairman Morris mentioned the high school. We built the Roberta Road Middle School, several elementary schools. We built the courthouse. We built the parking deck over there. We got a new infrastructure asset management out on Cabarrus Avenue. We got a new information technology office on Cabarrus Avenue. We built a new barn out at Frank List, and we finished, are working on the Rob Wallace Park down in Midland. And in addition to that, we've got teacher supplements up to the highest they've ever been, twelve percent, thereabouts. And our county staff is at a very competitive wage now. We've got them up where it's competitive, so we don't bring people in and train them to do their job, and then we lose them to other counties because they can pay more than we can. We done that, and they so many things that we've been able to do. And right now, our debt is just a little over five-hundred million. And we accomplished all of those things that we've been doing. And you know how we've been able to do that? It's because we brought in new tax base. We bought in new revenue. And that's these industries such as Eli Lilly and Ball and all, all the ones that, and we incentivized them. But when it comes down to it though, and I reviewed the policy, Chris, I wanted to do this because you wanted to discuss it some more. So I reviewed the policy and everything. And the only thing that I seen in the policy, and Chairman Morris, and I talked with you about this, and that was, was that the Economic Development Corporation had to convince the Board of Commissioners that this company would not come without an incentive grant. Now, the question is, and it always has been, I hear it all of the time, and you know what I'm gonna say, because y'all, y'all, some of you out there know what I'm gonna say, and that is, they will come anyway. And I'll end my little spill with this. None of us up here have a crystal ball. We can't tell if they gonna come or if they're not gonna come. But if it takes us to give them a little bit where we had nothing, and we'll give them a little bit of it, and when that period of time is over, it goes from now on to get the jobs, to get the tax base, increase the revenue, then I think that we're fooling ourselves if we don't do it. I don't want to take chances whether our business will come or that they won't come. And if an incentive will get them here and lock them in here, then I'm gonna do it every time, because that's what we have to do. And like Chairman Morris said, not trying to steal his thunder, but if we hadn't have done what we've done in the last eight, nine years, then that tax burden would be on us, the citizens of the county. And so, since we have, are getting the revenue from these businesses, some of those, the incentivized time has elapsed, and we're getting the full tax bill now. But had we not done that, we, that list of things that we done, we couldn't have done that. You know, there was a time that we didn't build schools for years and years and years and years. And do you know why we didn't do that? We didn't have the revenue. We didn't have the money to build the schools. But we got, we're not behind the eight ball now, whereas we was behind the eight ball for so long. But we're getting back behind the eight ball again with a billion-dollar request. But anyway, I wanted to spill my piece on it. I'm happy with the policy the way it is. I don't think we need to bring in no committee. I don't think we need to do anything to the policy. According to what I've been told, this policy was written in 2008. It hasn't been revised since then, but it's very competitive with neighboring counties, and I don't want to see us lose grip on the growth that we've got because the growth is paying the bills. And I appreciate you indulging me for those few minutes. Thank you.
Commissioner Wurtman.
It's gonna take me a little bit, but before I get to mine, I don't have a problem with Commissioner Meesmer responding. Something was directed at you while it's on your mind. I can go after, after you're done. That's fine.
Well, I'll just say, you know, no one up here is...
Well, I'll just say, you know, no one up here has mentioned anything about cuts. No one has mentioned anything about cuts, reducing services. And whenever we're talking about the tax rate, if we go revenue-neutral on the tax rate, because as it has been discussed in the community, well, it's been discussed in some of our meetings, that potentially the taxpayers' property values could increase thirty to fifty percent. Well, if we do not go a revenue-neutral tax rate, which means as a taxpayer, you'll pay the same bill as you paid the previous year, if we do not go revenue-neutral, your tax bill could be thirty to fifty percent more than what it is now. So if we vote on revenue tax rate, it's not touching, no services, nobody's, you're the only one that has mentioned cutting services. You're the one that had brought that topic up, so I want to make that clear. Also, too, you know, I pulled this from the consent agenda, so as what I proposed tonight was to table this until we can get more information. I pulled this from the consent agenda for there to be transparency. You said that it's a lack of transparency by me pulling this from the consent agenda. If we left this on the consent agenda, it would get voted on without any discussion. So that's not transparent. Transparent is pulling it off the consent agenda and allowing this conversation to take place. As I said, you know, we, my proposal is for us to set up a committee to look more into this. It's not something that we're going to get to decide tonight, to say, okay, let's link the tax rate to the tax incentive policy, okay, let's all vote on that and move on. That's not what I'm proposing here. I would like for this committee to look into it, to look at what some of the other communities are doing as well. And you had mentioned why you didn't see the reasoning behind tying the tax rate to this tax incentive policy, and I would argue that I think there's a great reason for that. As all this growth and development has come into Cabarrus County, this board has increased the tax rate two times in the past eight years. In addition, there's been two reevaluations where property values have increased. Now, I understand that's going to take place, but instead of going revenue-neutral, this board, under your leadership, has increased the tax rate two times. So if this growth is paying for itself, why do we still have the highest property tax rate? And yes, you can try to muddy the waters by saying per capita, you know, flipping to these other pages, but right here on the top, property tax rates. I went over them last time, I'll go over them again. Mecklenburg has a forty-seven, so Cabarrus County has a seventy-four cent tax rate. Mecklenburg has a forty-seven cent. Rowan has fifty-eight cent. Stanley has sixty-one cent. Union has fifty-eight cent, and Iredale has fifty cent. And right here, it says property tax rates. So, you know, it is clear that our tax rate is much higher than anyone in the region. So I see a reason for connecting, if we're going to allow a company to come in, give them a tax break while this board's still increasing rates on the average tax-paying citizen in the community, if this board's going to continue to increase taxes on that, but allow these companies from New York or wherever to move in and give them a tax break, we should certainly tie this together so that the local taxpayer sees the benefit from this.
Commissioner Wartman.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to take my time to actually explain what an incentive is, since that's being thrown around as well. But I'm going to actually show how it works, because we're going to do one tonight, and I'm going to do it from down there. All right, and talk to you, Steve and Tim, if you'll join me down here. Steve, over there. Steve's going to be the county, Tim's going to be the auditor, I'm going to be the business coming in that's requesting the incentive. So it's important to point out, we'll take Eli Lilly, for example. Until that building came there and Eli Lilly came there, all we were doing was getting the property taxes. That is it. One flat rate, year after year after year after year. Once Eli Lilly came in, they wanted that tax incentive, this is where that comes in. So if I handed you a dollar before the meeting tonight, can you please come up? All right. If you'll pay your taxes, because it's tax time, Steve, if we'll put one right here. Here's that tax dollar. Here's that tax dollar. Here's that tax dollar. Here's that tax dollar. One, two, and somebody's keeping a dollar. All right, so now that I come in, I'm Eli Lilly. I go through the EDC process. They bring it here, we approve it. Our taxpayers have already paid their taxes, they came and paid. So now it's my time to pay. So I come in, and we're going to keep it simple, because we're not, I'm going to pay my taxes to the county, because my tax bill is due. So one, two, three, four, five dollars for my taxes, and if you'll put it right here, please. All right. Now, Tim comes in, Tim audits everything that I've done, right? I have the equipment I said I was going to have, I have the jobs I said I was going to have, everything is there. So check, check, check. Did I pass my audit?
Yes.
All right. So now it's time for the county to give that rebate back or that incentive. The county keeps fifteen percent, I keep eighty-five for the first three years. Eli Lilly is different, that was a ten-year, but how it generally works is three years. So I'll take four of my dollars back, just for simplistic reasons, I know that's not eighty-five fifteen. All right. So at this point, can you hold that dollar real quick? At this point, I haven't reached into anybody else's pockets to take tax dollars. I'm going to take yours, I'm going to take yours, I'm going to take yours, I'm going to take yours. I just have mine back. That's all I have. And he still has one more dollar than he did when he was getting the actual original, just property. He still has one dollar more. Is it all five? No, it's not, but it's still more than he had to begin with. So now year two comes around, you can put that down. One, two, three, four, five. There's my taxes. Tim, did I pass my audit?
Yes.
I'd like my rebate back, please.
Four dollars.
Four dollars. He still has one more originally than he did before. Year three comes around. One, two, three, four, five. Did I pass my audit?
Yes, sir.
And if I didn't pass my audit, I don't get that money back.
Okay.
But I passed my audit, so now I get my four dollars back. Again, I've not touched your tax dollars, your tax dollars, your tax dollars, your tax dollars. Year five comes through. One, two, three, four, five, or year four comes through. I pay my taxes, I don't get audited, because I've already fulfilled the project. You don't audit, I've already done my part. You keep all five, I get nothing. That is how a tax incentive works. That's not an opinion, that is a fact. That is how it works. So now I'll go up there and explain the rest of it. Now, I've seen it posted, and again, I did not pull this off the consent agenda. I didn't pull it off, but I'm going to talk about it since it got pulled off. I've seen it posted that we're giving away tax dollars when instead we could help out downtown Concord, which we have nothing to do with, that's the city of Concord. I don't take those tax dollars that that company just got and give it to small businesses either. I don't do that with it. I simply get back what was mine. That's how it works. But it was said that we could take that tax incentive money and give teachers, law enforcement, EMS pay raises. It's not what we do either. I don't take their money. When we get that fourth year, then maybe we can look at it. Right now, we're only getting fifteen percent. Does that suck? Yeah, it does. But it's the game that we have to play. Would we all like to get a hundred percent of it? Absolutely. But they are not going to come here. That's an opinion. I respect your opinion. We see differently on that. That's your opinion, I totally respect it. I'm glad to see you come in. I'm going to, I'm going to vote for the policy tonight, but I'm not opposed to also have a new chair something and bring it back and let's see what we can get. That's where good conversation happens, that's where good ideas come from. I'm not opposed to that. I will vote for this policy tonight, but I would like to see that in addition, just see what you can do. I have no problem with that. There's just a difference in facts versus opinions. So facts, you just saw how it works. Opinions, we differ. We differ on it. Eli Lilly, when they were asked, when it came down to incentives, how many sites did you have in mind to choose from? There were twenty sites that they had to choose from. They came here because of that incentive. We're bringing people good-paying jobs by bringing these incentives in. And I hear, I'll go over the arguments. It's not fair to taxpayers. It's not fair that Ray didn't get his taxes, Tristan, Josh, Jack, Amanda, it's not fair that they didn't get a rebate on their taxes. That's true. It's not. But they're not providing three-hundred jobs. They're not providing the other things that that company is doing, so not everybody's going to get the same thing. I hear that we have all these "Hiring Now" signs. Yeah, we do. But if we ever stop to think that maybe they're sorry jobs that nobody wants, they don't pay good, they might not be hours that people want to work, it's not our job to hold a person hostage in this county by not bringing in a good-paying job and forcing them to take not just one, but some of those jobs, you're going to have to take two to make ends meet. So I'm sorry if you want to see your kids, I'm sorry if you want to see your wife, but you're going to have to pick up two of these jobs to pay your bills, because I refuse to bring this good company in that you have a chance. Our job up here is to make sure people have the best chance possible to succeed. It's not to hold them hostage and force them to take jobs they don't want. That's not our job. To me, that's big government. Last I checked, we were all against big government. I hear that the infrastructure is going to be strained. So for the infrastructure, Eli Lilly, the amount, and I use Eli Lilly because that's one we talk about all the time. They say that the one Eli Lilly is three thousand houses. That's three thousand houses that are two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-thousand dollars in value a piece to make up the one tax base of Eli Lilly. I know there's three thousand in here, because I counted them today. This is three thousand, each one of these is a house. So this is how many houses it would take to equal the tax base for Eli Lilly. So, number one, where are we going to put all these people? Because we all already hear, you don't want any more apartments, you don't want any more mini storages. Where are they going to get the land? The people are coming no matter what, because they like the schools here, they want to live here, they're coming no matter what. Each of those people are not only going to have three thousand houses, that's going to have water and sewer allocated to them, they're more than likely also going to have a husband or wife. And each one of them are going to have a car a piece. So here's the six thousand cars from all those houses that we're going to add to the Now, there's only four-eight-hundred of them. Here's the other one. That's the six thousand cars that we're now adding to our streets, because we don't want to bring that company in. We want to build those houses. Also, each one of those people are going to have probably at least two kids. So now here's the kids that we're going to put into our school system, because we don't want to bring that here, and we just want to build houses. So there's the six thousand kids, and for the maintenance personnel watching, I will stand behind tonight and clean all these up off the floor. So by not bringing that one company here, now we have six thousand extra vehicles, six thousand extra kids in the school, and everything else, because we didn't want to bring that company and give them an incentive. They're coming no matter what, we might as well at least give them good jobs. That's how I look at it. I hear another one I've heard since the election war drum's been beat. Kenny Wartman campaigned against incentives. You're a hundred percent correct. That is a hundred percent factual statement, because I trusted somebody I should not have. When I found out how incentives worked, it's our obligation to educate people and tell them why our view changed. Do I still agree with incentives? Absolutely not. I wish we did not have to give them. However, it is the game that we're playing. And in order to bring those jobs to those people, to prevent them from being held hostage, this is the game we play. And I'll vote for it every time. Again, I don't disrespect your opinion, that's yours. I'm glad we don't see eye to eye, because I think that fosters some collaboration. But that's how I see it, and that's how I can explain it so that everybody else can see it, too. If you still don't want them here, it's up to you, but that's why I'm going to vote for them. It's that simple.
Hey, Commissioner.
I'll just add to it. Like Lynn, I do enjoy getting all the facts and information out. It's good to hear from both sides. I've said the last meeting, this is, I guess, my fourth month, and it's been talked about probably every month, and you can look at it both ways. I see both viewpoints, I see what Chris is talking about, I see what the other ones are speaking about, and it's just, it's just an individual decision that just has to be made by your research. And Kenny done a good job of demonstrating, you know, I've been a business owner for twenty years. I have to give rebates in order to get business, have to sign contracts and get rebates. Do I want to do that? No, because I'm giving a little bit of it away, but in return, I'm getting a whole lot more business in the long run. So I understand the incentives and the rebaked argument. But also, like Commissioner Wartman said, with Mr. Meesmer there, I would like to, I don't mind for him putting something together to give us some more information. You know, the more information we've got, the better we can make a decision. That's all.
And I'll just say, you know, now, I don't think anybody, I don't think there's probably any one of us up here that is advocating for there to be more homes or apartments built in the community, especially apartment buildings. We see that going up everywhere in the community, and the rent on these apartments are outrageous, they're more than a mortgage payment. So, you know, we, nobody is advocating for there to be more homes, more apartments, anything in that realm. And I understand that we want business tax revenue more than residential. But, you know, we talk about how this growth is paying for itself, and we've heard this number about the six to one, and that does not encompass the schools and the additional services that the county has to then provide. That is not in that number. So that's where I feel that setting up a committee to be able to dive into this and get more information. The committee may come back and say, hey, this is the best thing, you know, coming and going. But, you know, we could get into this and actually know the numbers and know what's going on. I know, and I'm sure each of you, being out in the community, hear this as well, that our taxes have continuously increased as the county has exploded and grown. So, you know, we've heard that time and time again, and I want to dive more into this. So anyway, with that being said, you know, I would make a motion that we table the review of the EDC policy and create a committee to dive into this issue, to get more information, and come back with a report to this board.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Hey, I'll make that motion. And I'll tell you why.
I made the motion.
Oh, you made the motion. I'll second, but I'll explain a little bit why. You know, as we sit here and we listen to the advantages of what we're doing with incentives, which I totally agree with, with all that said and done, at the end of the day, we still have five-hundred-million dollars in deferred maintenance with the school system and other things like that. And so there's got to be a reason. And I'm, but I first admit, I'm probably not smart enough to figure it out. But the incentive package, we have to do, I get that, and it's evidently helping us in the big picture. But still, something's missing to the fact that we're five-hundred-million dollars in deferred maintenance, that, you know, and probably my background from being on the school board, that's probably the way I feel that way. It's just like we could never get to, and a lot of it's because we've had to build courthouses and libraries and all of that, I get that. But still, there's, I think there's a gap, there's something missing, and maybe this group, this committee, could help me understand what that is.
And I would be happy for, you know, Commissioner Fur or Commissioner Wartman, you know, to serve with me on this committee if so, you know. know, to serve with me on this committee if so, you know, if so desired. Well, too, if it's just me, if it's just myself and another commissioner is okay. You can't have all of them.
Okay, I think the motion on the floor is to table action on the Economic Development Grant Program Policy Approval for tonight. And I don't think, I think you left that open-ended. You did not say until when.
Well, I would like to chair that committee, and so that can be part of the motion. And, you know, obviously, this probably cannot be done in one month. So, if we could set a timeline of to expire in three months. So, if this is, you know, if a committee meets and the information is gathered and a presentation can be done in two months, okay, great. But I feel like there should be.
Yeah, I think we got two separate motions here. You made one motion to table action on this item. I think it would be appropriate if you would like to make a second motion establishing the committee and providing whatever timeline you think is appropriate.
Okay, so we'll vote on the first.
Yeah, and Commissioner, is that what you were seconding, the tabling the action on this? So, that's the one item that we're addressing?
But do we need to put a timeframe on that table?
I would defer to the county attorney. Normally, when we lay an item on the table, it, it, let's hear what.
Usually, it goes to the next meeting. If you specify the amount of time that you want the committees to run, or you want to leave it, you know, as a matter that you've tabled, you can do that too. So, if you want to say 90 days, which I think is what Commissioner Meesmer was talking about with reference to his committee to look at it, then that would make sense. So, in that way, the two are kind of tied together. I wouldn't think you'd want to table it longer than the amount of time that the committee is going to consider it.
So, can I amend?
I mean, you could, but they seem to be tied together in that way.
Right. So, do you amend your motion to indicate table for 90 days?
That's correct.
Are you good with that? Okay. Is there further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, let me just, before we vote on this one way or the other, because I just, if we table it, where's that going to leave us with our current economic development policy? Just where it is right now? The way it's written right now?
That is a valid question, and I'm not quite sure why. I mean, we have not approved this on an annual basis in previous years. Mr. Cook, could you comment on that?
That's true. But it was kind of decided by the clerk, and I was in agreement with that, that some of these policies, they just kind of continue on from year to year, ought to be looked at maybe on an annual basis. So, because of that, that's why, because of that, that's why this policy and the rules, your rules of procedure will put on the agenda here at the end of the year. So, but to answer your question, which is, do this continue in effect until you do something about them? True, they do. So, the fact that you table it, you know, and look at it in three months or whatever, the policy will remain in effect in the meantime.
Okay, well, that's all well and good on that part. You know, we can table it. That won't be no problem. But then, when we do that, we're going to establish a committee that you're volunteering to chair for.
It's going to be a separate motion.
Yeah, I know. But before I vote to table it, I want to know what your plan is. Your plan is to form a committee, and we'll vote on that in a minute.
That's correct.
All right. But now, if you want to form the committee, what's going to be the goals of that committee? Because, I mean, the research has already been done, to my knowledge. And I mean, I haven't talked to these various counties myself, Chris, but the work has been done. And we're as competitive as our neighbors are.
Well, that's what this committee is going to.
What can you bring us that we don't already know?
Well, that's what this committee will dive into. You know, we have information that's put out by the EDC that this is their job to promote that and to make it look the best it can be. And so, of course, it's going to be put out information. Like I said, this six to one number that is thrown around as far as each company that comes in, for every dollar they pay, we get six back. But like I said, that does not include, you know, with what comes along with the growth, like school construction, things. So, I would like to dive more into getting all of that information. And so, you know, we'll work through that. But I want there to be, and like I said, I'm happy, you know, with Commissioner Fur or Commissioner Wortman to sit on this committee, you know, with me. I know we can't, you know, there can't be more than two. But, you know, I'm happy with that for us to work through that and just get more information. As I said, this committee could come back and say, well, actually, you know, for every dollar received, eight comes back. I mean, we'll find out. But I would like to dive into that information.
I'd like to think it was that way, but I don't think it would be. But, you know, I mean, it just, it's not ironic that we're discussing this this month in December. We could have discussed this in September, for that matter goes.
It could be in.
Or we could do it in April of next year, for that matter goes. It's just that we got it on the agenda to discuss this month. So, I mean, I don't think 90 more days is going to matter one way or the other.
It's still ineffective.
I mean, so, it's just, you know, you put it on here, we discuss it. And so, if you think we need more, 90 more days, I'll be fine with that. And then, whenever we get this vote, then we'll talk about your committee thing.
Do you, we just talked about, but do you have any idea the different departments or who would make up your committee? Are you going to have a representative from Economic Development? Well, I mean, that can be discussed. You know, my thought, which I guess this will be in the next vote, so I don't, do we need to vote on this before we discuss?
I think we can discuss whatever questions that need clarification to determine the vote on this motion.
So, you know, I mean, the committee, you know, I'm not thinking a 20-person committee or 10 people. That would be too big of an undertaking. But, you know, we would use the resources of the EDC or resources from our tax department. Could be resources from the school system as far as, well, it'd probably be more of our finance department as far as what's money spent on things of that nature. So, it'd be a combination of all those resources. But I would like for there to be, and, you know, consulting with the EDC, but I would like for there to be people from the community on this board. And as I said, you know, and as you mentioned, you know, we just have differing opinions on that. And that's okay. And that's where, you know, this committee can discuss some of those differences and, yeah, and go from there.
Any other discussion or questions?
You know, if we vote on whether to have it, I mean, we may not get three votes. It's really, right?
That is true. I mean, the motion that's on the floor now is to table action for 90 days on our economic development project, policy. So, if there's.
I just, I want to clarify, Rich, by us tabling this, if we have an economic development project come in next month, we're going to still go off of the current guidelines.
That's correct.
So, there's really no harm in tabling it. Let's see what we can do.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. We have, I think, where you've expressed a desire to make another motion while we're on this same topic. I do want to mention, while we're sort of in between here, the next item that's on our agenda are the rules of procedure. And I wanted to mention that simply to explain my action of earlier in the meeting. Our rules of procedure are very specific that when a person makes a motion, that they have, they are the first person to have the opportunity to discuss that motion. Then, each member has an opportunity to discuss that motion themselves. Then, we can go back to the person that originally made the motion. But those, that's not something I was just coming up with off the top of my head. That's very clearly spelled out in our rules of procedure. It also indicates that anybody should be recognized by the chair before they speak. We typically do not do that because we don't have a problem with that. I think our board is respectful and does not try to talk over one another and that sort of thing. But that was just an explanation. Now, if you have another motion that you would like to make related to this item, we'll hear that now.
All right. So, I would move that this body, this board, creates a committee to study the EDC policy and the impacts of the community. I'd be happy to chair that committee. Commissioner Fur, if you would like to serve with me, or if you'd like to, I know that you have mentioned, well, let me finish the motion. And, well, I'll tell you what. Let me ask you first. Are you willing to serve? I know you said you wanted to get more information about this and more information about tax incentives, and I felt like this might be a good way.
No, I don't mind. But I don't know, but here again, as far as experience, I've got the least experience on the board in those matters. But I'm okay with it.
Okay, so.
Unless one of the other more experienced gentlemen up here would like to do it.
Well, all right. So, my motion would be is that this, I move that this board, this body creates a committee to set up a, to set up a committee to dive into the economic development corporation policy, to gather more research, to do more, to gain more knowledge about how this affects our community, what's the advantages or disadvantages of this community. And I would, I would be chair of the committee, along, serve with Tim Fur, and I feel like it would be appropriate that each of us could appoint somebody to serve with us on the committee. Would you be amenable to that? That way, it's not me appointing all of the members. That gives an opportunity for Commissioner Fur to appoint someone of his choosing. And within 90 days, we will come back with a report.
Is there a second to that motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I do want to comment on this. And with no disrespect to you, Chris, I wouldn't go along with your, you being the chair. And I wouldn't go along with, actually, I mentioned this earlier, I don't think we need a committee. And if the rest of the board says that they think we do, then I don't think you should be chair. And I will justify this very easily because, you know, you and I, even though we're fellow commissioners, we're friends too. And, but our thinking on economic development and on a lot of things, you know, is different. You're on this side of the fence, and I'm on this side of the fence. And you've got a lot of people in your circle that feel the same way that you do. So, who's going to be the one to appoint the committee? If you're the chairman, then you're, you know, you're.
I just went over that.
But what I would rather us do, though, if we're going to do that, I would rather, if County Manager Downs would be agreeable, I would rather the county staff do the research and do it. Do it diligently and do it right, just as if looking, being as non-biased as you can be, look at this side, look at that side, and come up with the facts, that we can make a decision based on the facts, not opinions. And there won't be, neither of the commissioners will be involved with it because we've already got our own mindset. My mindset is I'm pro economic development incentives. Yours is no, we don't want to do that.
That's entirely incorrect. But I had just mentioned earlier in the meeting that if we could tie this to the tax rate, I would vote for, I didn't say this, but I did say if we could, I want to find that compromise in that. And you may not want me to be chairman because you don't like my opinion on it, just as.
You're biased.
But that's exactly why I mentioned, you know, Commissioner Fur voted for the last tax incentive. So, you're going to have a commissioner that's voted for tax incentive, commissioners voted against tax incentive. You each get to appoint who you feel. So, that way, it is fair, evenly divided. But, you know, if we, you know, as I said, if this could be linked to the tax rate and the taxpayer can see the benefit of these tax incentives, I'd vote for every single one that come before this board. So.
Yeah, well, let me ask you this, Chris. How many tax incentive grants have you voted for?
I have not voted for one because I don't like the formula, the way it is, as we mentioned. Also, too, you know, it was mentioned, you know, about these companies, whether or not you, you brought this up, that they, whether or not they would come or not. But, you know, we've had a company here that has received three tax incentives. You know, they've already got one, they're here operating, come in and get two, come in and get three. So, it's not just enticing them. There's, you know, a company that's already operating, doing business here, it's very hard to believe they're going to pick up and move their entire business outside the county without, you know, it's just a constant keep coming back. But as I said, to make it fair, that's the reason that I had asked Commissioner Fur to serve with me. And he can choose, he has voted for a tax incentive, I voted against a tax incentive. So, that makes it, you know, that's about as fair as you can get.
You know, I've spoke my piece on it. With all respect, I just don't, I just don't want it to be biased. And that's why I think that if the county did it, if the county staff did the research, just like they would for any other thing that we bring up, then it would, we would know that it's non-biased.
I understand that. This report would come back to this board for any sort of vote, discussion, any sort of policy changes. Committee's not going to have the authority to change the policy. This would still come before this commission board to discuss and to say, hey, don't like that. And it can be voted down. You know, just trying to think of a different way to approach this and for us to be, you know, involved.
And that's one of the issues that you and I've had all along. You know, we talked about this when you was re-elected this last time, you know. And you made mention to me then that, look, you know, I think you even mentioned, is there a way that we can tie the economic development tax money to schools?
Yeah.
And I understood that.
And I'm okay with something like that.
But unfortunately, we got so many other bills, we can't designate it just to schools.
You know, I think if the public could see a direct benefit of that, instead of it just going into one big lump sum, if it's tied to the tax rate, or if it's tied to school maintenance, you know, this list that we have, the, you know, the overdue maintenance of schools. If we can come up, and that's where this committee could come up with some of these creative ideas. And it can be multiple ideas. And like I said, it would come back to this board to be discussed and talked about, and then a decision would be made. It's not affecting anything to do with the policy at this moment.
Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
And I know where Mr. Schu's coming from because every committee I think we've ever created at the school level, which they created a lot of committees, I think it was probably biased every time. As much as you tried to it not be, people want their own people on it. And so, that's why you have to have a group, you got to have county employees, probably to make up the majority of it, and only be a few outsiders.
Yes.
Would you be willing, jury makes a motion.
I did make the motion.
Would you be willing to amend it to county people on it with you serving as the liaison for the commissioners? And I'm going to be very blunt and honest, that's how I am. There's no telling who's going to get input when it goes outside of here. It could end up all sorts of places, and we have no idea where it's coming from, if it's biased, if it's not. I'm okay if you, if you're the commissioner liaison to it. I have no problem with that because that way, this is your baby, you wanted to. But I would have an issue with non-county people. I would want to make sure Paige is on there. I mean, she is the economic development. I would want to make sure that one of our attorneys is on there. I mean, there's a lot. So, I would be okay if, and I don't know if you'd be willing to amend it. It's your motion, but that's my request. It's your motion, but that's my request.
And I understand exactly where you come from, and you, you know, you mentioned having Paige on there. Well, you know, you're going to have a biased opinion there, because this is her job. So she's not going to say, oh, yeah, no, we don't... You know, we want to get rid of this tax incentive policy. This is... That's... This is her job. So, I mean, obviously, she's going to be biased on that. With it coming from, you know, myself, you know, serving on the committee, and Commissioner Farr serving on the committee, you've got... And then we each appointing, you know, someone that we feel Tim may decide he wants to appoint Paige, he may not. You know, I feel like you're going to have a more non-biased committee in that direction, and then use the resources of the EDC, county staff, things. I feel like you would get a more unbiased of report, in my opinion. So I would not want to amend my motion for that.
Okay, other discussion? I will say that I would not be able to vote for this motion. I think that this board of five commissioners are all elected by the people. I think that a more appropriate approach to this issue, if it's something that we feel needs to be studied and discussed, would be for us to have a discussion at our work session, an open session, where everyone can hear and watch on television, and have an opportunity to provide input on that discussion. If, I think, an alternative approach might be that this would be an item that we would discuss at our annual retreat, our planning retreat that we do in... Usually in February. That's also open to the public. You know, I don't trust this process, and certainly based on the comments that you made a few minutes ago about per capita taxes, indicates clearly to me that you do not have an understanding of the difference between the tax rate and the tax bill.
I have a very clear understanding.
Wait just a moment, and I'll be happy to give you the floor, that these are the type of topics. So I think that this board, once they enter into that discussion, if they feel like a committee needs to be established, then I think it would be the responsibility of these elected board members to determine who those members would be appointed to that committee.
I was sitting here thinking, when you were... Right before you got ready to speak, that I knew you had a... We had a retreat coming up, probably the first of the year, and I'm agreement that that's probably when it should be done.
Okay, well, we do have a motion on the floor at this time, so is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
Okay, I think that is four to one.
We'll do retreat now.
Yeah, okay, so we had four noes once, so that motion fails. But we... I think that I hear a consensus amongst the board that we add that to the agenda for our retreat, the first of the year. Okay, so we will move now to item two in new business, which is in regards to our rules of procedure. This item, same as the one we just finished, was pulled off the consent agenda by Commissioner Miesmer, so I will turn the floor over to you on that one.
I pulled this item off of our consent agenda as well, so there could be more discussion amongst the commissioners about this. So this is a several-page document, or actually a little bit more than that, but the section that seemed... That has been indicated to change is the appointment process for vacancy of the commissioners. Is that correct? Is that my understanding, Lauren? I just want to make sure that's correct. Okay. You and I have emailed back and forth about what the changes were. So this policy, the proposed change in this policy is, as I said, to address a vacancy of the commission board, which we had went through this summer. But my concern is, is that we keep changing this policy, the rules keep changing on this. So the first time policy was changed by the state legislator, and it was not announced to the commission board that the policy was going to change. We had went through this in one of our previous meetings, that... And that's whenever I learned that the county... Cabarrus County has a lobbyist in Raleigh that we pay monthly, and that this lobbyist was used to get this passed through the legislator to change how our appointment process is. And like I said, there was no communication to some of the commissioners on that. And so this would be another change, and I feel like the reason for this change is because the process did not turn out the way the chair and vice chair wanted in the last appointment process. The way it will read now is that we would go to a balloting, a balloting procedure, where we would each write down, instead of in the open discussion, that we'd each write down our candidate of choice, and that you're actually required to vote for... To rank each of the members, or each of the nominees. And I don't feel that that's... I don't feel that that's appropriate, that we would have to rank these nominees. You know, there's some that we just, you know, in the last appointment process, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioner Schu, Commissioner Morris, you both agreed on individual. Commissioner Wortman had his nominee, and I didn't agree with either one. So in that instance, there would be a situation where, you know, I'm forced to vote for someone that I may not want to be on this board. And I feel like here we are, changing the rules again, like I said, for the second time this year, and I feel like the reason in being is because it didn't work out the way the chair and the vice chair wanted it this last go-round. If we changed the policy to what is proposed, it would have went exactly the way you guys wanted it, the way you two would have wanted it. So essentially, we're just changing the rules to accommodate... To accommodate two of the commissioners, instead of there just being a majority vote, doesn't work out, goes to the clerk of court. So that's my issue with the new language in the policy.
Yeah, let me correct you on one thing. Those ballots, written ballots, are not secret ballots, they're public ballots.
I didn't say they were secret.
Yeah, those will be disclosed to the public, how every commissioner votes. You alluded to that.
Well, so in the last... In the last way we did, each commissioner put forth a nominee, or not each commissioner, but there was two nominees.
Had an opportunity to...
Yes, opportunity to put forth, and that was in the public. We discussed it in public. You know, I had pushed for a public comment section, which didn't happen, but... So it was discussed publicly, and we discussed it publicly. In this way, there's not going to be much discussion. We're just going to write down names and then turn it in. And I don't think that that is a very transparent way of doing it. I don't feel that it's, like I said, you know, going through a second rule change this year is just moving the goal line.
Mr. Chairman, let me address this situation. Chris, to be honest with you, and be very frank with you, you was part of that problem that we had.
I'm sure you think that...
You know, do you know why you were part of that problem?
Well, I would love to hear your opinion, why.
No. Everybody that was here, you didn't nominate nobody, nor did you vote for anybody.
Right.
So that left three commissioners, two said yes, and one said another way, and you know what that did? That embarrassed the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners, because we couldn't make a decision on something so simple as that. We had what we thought was a candidate that had proved theirselves to be quality, and knew... Could hit the ground running, we knew that. But we couldn't make a decision, so we had to pass it on to the clerk of court, because we couldn't make a decision like that. And you contributed that, Chris, because you didn't say one word about a nomination, you didn't support either of the two nominees. And so that left us with three.
If I had not supported your nominee and supported Commissioner Wortman's nominee, it would have been the same situation. So don't lay this at my doorstep. If I would have supported Wortman's nominee, we would have been in the same situation. So don't say that it's my fault.
Yeah, but you need to participate too, though, Chris.
Oh, well, I didn't agree with either of the nominees, but that's...
Yeah, but that's...
And that's my prerogative.
But you didn't nominate nobody.
Well, I... Yeah, I did not nominate anyone, but...
If you had nominated somebody, then we'd still been in a mess, but the bottom line is though...
Yeah, it still would have went to the clerk of court, so that argument doesn't hold up.
And we were trying to prevent that. I was trying to prevent that. I thought it was an embarrassment.
And that's exactly what this language change is, is try to prevent that, because it didn't work out the way you and the chairman wanted, so...
No, not necessarily me. I'm sure Chairman Morris either way.
It's just my concern about the policy.
But, you know, this is a more fair way, in my opinion, is a more fair way. You've got, obviously, if you've got one vacancy, then that means you've got four commissioners, and if you've got... I nominate you, and you nominate so-and-so and so-and-so, then each of us gets so many points, and it's settled. We don't have to call on the clerk of court to make a decision for us. That was so embarrassing, but anyway, that's just my two cents on it.
Great choice he made.
I was going to say, nothing personal about the selection. You know, Commissioner Wortman?
I think out of all of us up here, if somebody should have a problem with it, it would be me. I'm the one that hung it up. I didn't vote with you guys, voted against you, Ray Holmes. I don't have a problem with the way it looks now, because I won't be sending it back to the clerk of court. I don't have a problem with how it is. I stood my ground, I spoke my piece, and now we have Tim. Not a personal...
Appreciate that.
But I'm just not going to send it back to the clerk of court, so I'm fine with it. And my problem is that we always... We always talk about transparency, and Commissioner Morris made a comment earlier about, you know, our work session is to discuss this. We just had this on two weeks ago, and the way I look at it, we talk about it, then the public has two weeks to look up on YouTube, to think about it. They know what we've said, and they know how we feel, and that gives them the chance to decide if they want to come speak before we vote on it. And I'm going to ask Lauren to play a video of our work session to show that we had plenty of opportunity to speak on it, and everybody sits there quietly, awkwardly. And then we just pull it off after that opportunity to discuss it. So to me, we robbed the people of two weeks, knowing how we feel. And so that's... I think it starts at 2:28, is where it starts at.
2:04, and that is annual policy review. That has got... That includes our rules of procedure, our appointment policy, and our economic development grant program, starting with the...
Anyway, we went over both of these, and none of us had any comments on it. We sat there awkwardly in silence, and Chairman Morris didn't give us every opportunity to discuss it. I understand pulling things off, I understand that, I understand why he did it. But to me, if we're going to talk about transparency, I would have liked to see us talk about it at the work session. They have two weeks to know what we said, two weeks to decide if they want to speak on it. And if you were going to pull it, I'd rather see you pull it tonight at the start. That way, we at least gave them an opportunity to hear what we had to say for two weeks. That's...
I mean, you know, we have discussions at our work sessions, we obviously have debate here, and this is all public meetings, so, you know, we have an opportunity to discuss it there, we have an opportunity to discuss it in this meeting, it's all public, you know, it's all... You know, it's all public information. I mean, anybody's, you know, can watch and see what the discussion takes place, but...
Yeah, I think the difference is, when we discuss it at our work session, we're giving notice to the public that this is a topic that they have an opportunity to weigh in on. When we discuss it in new business here, it's after the public comment session has already been concluded, and so no one has an opportunity to provide any input before we vote. On this particular policy, on the rules of procedure, and I think, you know, we probably need to spend a little bit of time on the rules of procedure, but if you look at Rule 28, its headline is duty to vote. A, duty to vote. Every board member must vote, except when excused from voting as provided by this rule. If you... It gives the grounds for excusal, which mainly are if there's a financial interest or some conflict. It's very specific about what you can be excused from, then we have the procedure for excusal, and then we have the consequences for non-excused failure to vote. And that's where it gets a little fuzzy, because it clearly states that if a member who has not been excused from voting fails to vote on a matter, the member's failure to vote shall be recorded as an affirmative vote, provided, A, the... One, the member is physically present, and two, the member has physically withdrawn from the meeting room without being excused by a majority vote of the remaining members present. The situation on this particular one was, the rules say that it should be counted as an affirmative vote, but the rules on naming a replacement did not make it clear which... If that had been counted as a yes vote, it would have been counted in which direction. So this verbiage that has been included in the rules of procedure clears that up. And so if we have a member who refuses to vote, as did happen this last time, then this makes provisions so that that business is clearly conducted. And so based on that, I would move that we approve the rules of procedures as are included in our agenda, titled revised effective December 2023.
And I'd second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor, and I'll open up for discussion on that motion.
Doesn't the school board vote this way now?
I believe they do.
Yes.
Yeah, I think this is the same procedure they use.
It would put us on the same page.
Right. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
That motion passes four to one. Okay, and we move now to reports, and first up is reports from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or various boards or other committees. Does anyone have anything tonight? Okay, then we...
I would just like to say that Tim Farr and I have swapped our town liaisons. Tim is going to be taking the town of Midland, and I'm taking Kannapolis. And I just want to take this opportunity to say I've enjoyed working with the town of Midland, and I look forward to being able to help them in any way whatsoever, even though I'm not their liaison, but it has been a pleasure.
Great, thank you. Okay, we move now to general comments by board members.
Mine's real easy. I just want to wish everybody a happy Merry Christmas. Thank you for all your support over the years.
I would certainly concur with that, and I think we'll have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year by the time we meet again, so I hope everyone's holidays are great. Does anyone else have anything? Okay, to the best of my knowledge, we do not have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Just a little second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We stand... We stand adjourned, thank you.